Good morning and welcome. Mr. Bailey, you got an invocation this morning?
Yes. I see my guests didn't show up, so I'll do it.
Okay.
Let us pray. Father, we thank thee for this day. I thank thee, Lord, for our life, our health, and our strength. We ask thee, God, to look after those that take care of us, such as the first responders and law enforcement. We ask thee, God, to remember President Bush, 41, and his family. Take care of them, dear God, in their bereavement. We ask thee, God, to bless each and every one of the citizens of Wayne County as we attempt to go into a new year. We ask thee, God, to ask the commissioners to do whatever they think is right for the citizens of Wayne County. All the things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please rise and place your prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My minister just showed up.
You want him to pray a few?
If you would like so, sir.
Okay. We'll have two prayers today.
John, you did a good job.
What can you show it is?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So many people lined up out there, couldn't hardly get any.
This is Minister Charlie Walker, one of our social ministers at Mount Zion Church.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord, for another opportunity to call on your name and pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, that you said men ought always to pray and not faint. So, Father, although this seems like the second prayer, we actually write now that your hearing of us will be from the heart, that we in this room would realize, Lord, that you reign on the just and the unjust. So, Father, right now, we actually bless the commissioners in a special way. We ask you, Lord, allow them to have the wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon, that as the people have needs and wishes, Lord, that they'll be able to discern what's good and what's not. We ask you, Lord, to bless the Bereave family of the president. We ask you right now, in the name of Jesus, Lord, let peace be all over them. Now, Father, we ask you right now, that as these commissioners begin to discern what's needed for Wayne County, we ask you, Lord, to be over them, give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding that the people will be served well. Now, Father, we ask you right now, through the further exercise of the day, that you don't leave them and don't forsake them, that, Father, they'll be strong in you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Walker, being late, you'll be back the third.
Going to make a little bit of a change on the agenda. We have an introduction. We have this morning?
Yeah, I do. We'd like to introduce Tammy Schrecker. And Tammy, who is our DSS director, has a special introduction that everybody knows.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I came to share some exciting news, not to ask for anything today. But I am here today to introduce you to Ms. Kimberly McGuire. Kimberly has recently been named Deputy Director of Department of Social Services, so we are so excited. Kim has 16 years' experience in social work. Fifteen of those have been in Wayne County. She's been a social worker, a supervisor, a program manager, a program administrator, and now she is going to serve as the Deputy Director. So Kim will be over all our social work programs now, and she's done a lot of work in that area and will be continuing to direct our social work programs as well as acting in my absence. So I just wanted to come this morning to introduce you to Kim, and we are just so excited that she's with us and continuing to be with us and put in so much time and energy into Wayne County.
Good speech.
And I'm grateful and I'm honored just for this opportunity, just to be able to give back and do all that I can for the citizens of Wayne County. So I appreciate just the opportunity that has been given to me. So thank you, guys.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Can we say anything?
Sure.
Okay. This has been a long time coming. This is a great opportunity for Department of Social Services. With Tammy's leadership, as you know, this DSS has made a tremendous stride forward. But with Kimberly being a named Deputy Director, this gives us a solid leadership, good leadership, great leadership for the future. So I just wanted to say it's a privilege to be a part of, and Commissioner Kamori and I sit on the DSS board. We're so excited, excited for the things that are taking place at DSS. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to that and put a little bit of history to my working relationship with Ms. McGuire. I was principal of Southern Academy, alternative school, five years. And somewhere around '03, '04, she came as a representative for DSS to work with us, with students who needed that kind of help. And so it's a real pleasure to see an opportunity for people who've been working and toiling in Wayne County to be able to acquire positions like this. And to add to this, to the Director, thank you for being aware of diversity, and we need that throughout our counties, to give folk an opportunity to show their abilities and acquire position. Thank you very much.
Okay, then, we'll move on, and I'll let y'all go back to work, if that's what you want to do. Okay, let's move to the organization, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Parker.
I'll accept nominations for Chairman of the Board for the coming year.
Counsel, I recommend or nominate Commissioner Joe Gurley as Chairman for upcoming year from the Board of County Commissioners.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion that Mr. Gurley be elected unanimously?
So moved.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Parker, may I continue? Okay. So now we'll entertain the election of Vice Chairman. Do I have any nomination of Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I nominate Mr. Bill Paye, Vice Chair of this organization.
All right. Have nomination Bill Paye's, any other nominations? If not, it's closed. All in favor of Vice Chair Bill Paye, please let, raise your right hand. Thank you.
So you didn't go where it's ours?
No. I'm hard out there.
Okay, so next we have approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve a minutes?
So moved.
Motion made, any discussion? No discussion, raise your right hand. Next discussion, agenda. Mr. Honeycutt?
Oh, we do have one walk-on today. You should have a memo in front of you from our purchasing director, Noel Woods. Basically, we would like to add two firms to the legal services related to our HMG P program, which is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, to allow them to be part of the teams that go out and look at the purchasing property under that program.
Is any other board member have anything to add today?
We'd like consent if we could, sorry. If we could put that under consent.
Consent agenda is number six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other commissioner have anything?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, any discussion? No discussion, please, don't be ready, right hand for approval. All right, next is public comments time. Anyone in the audience like to make a comment?
Name, phone number, address, please.
Dennis Lewis, 786 Perkins Road, back from North Carolina. 919-580-7417. I would like to tell you a little bit about the company I've represented, Haye Artificial Fireworks. It's a small fireworks company based in North Carolina. We have three divisions, eastern, which I am responsible for, central, and western. It was started by three individuals who thought that small communities should be able to afford fireworks displays for their events and festivals. We were small fish in a big pond, so to speak. We still are. We can compete with the big, larger companies because we have lower overhead and profit margins. We know our place. We do not shoot shows over $20,000. We let the larger companies fight over. Most of our business is a repeat business. We're at the point where we have grown as much as we can. We're getting older and have to weigh investing money to expand a business that we may not be able to continue as counterproductive. We believe in giving back. We donate some shows. The first show in Seven Springs was donated. I saw what Ms. Olamay Adams was trying to do and donated the show. Rick Pridgen, a member of the school board, shot the show. I helped raise funds for the second show. We have donated more than one show to my hometown. We have donated a show to Praise in the Park, National Night Out. We have donated product to Relapse Alive. When the budget crisis hit in 2013 and the sequester budget cuts went into effect, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base had to cancel their fireworks. We reached out to the base and donated a $9,000 display. We were unable to shoot the show due to the weather. We donated a show for the Kaver Window Scholarship Auction. We have donated three shows for the Methodist Children's Home, and the display in Eureka for their Christmas tree lighting is a donated show. I try to donate one show a year personally. I recently made a request for Public Records to confirm my belief that the company I represent and myself have been singled out by this board to conform to a rule that applies to no one else. This rule was made because I supposedly violated a board policy and made someone mad. I believe that I have been falsely accused and must now defend myself. On more than one occasion, I have told you that the rule was unfairly applied, and the board has not done one thing to address the same. I wish that we could have had a conversation, but you wanted to punish me. Believe me, you have, and you continue to do so. I find it amazing, the gentleman who represents the district I live in has never spoken to me, inside or outside of this room. Your disdain for me has caused you to forget the teachings of the Bible. You have proven false, the basic tenet of our Declaration of Independence. You have trampled and ignored the moral fabric and protections provided to me by the Constitution. You have violated your oath of service, your code of ethics, and laws of the state of North Carolina. Your worst offense, however, is to elevate yourself to the position of a ruler, forgetting that you are also a servant foremost. I am prepared to present the evidence four minutes at a time, twice a month, and when finished, I believe most any person will be able to see that this board has, in fact, been an error. Being the dumb son of a tenant farmer, it will take time to put everything to paper. This is not a bad thing, because the holiday season is upon us. Let's enjoy this time of the year. I wish you a Merry Christmas, and I will see you in January.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is anyone else wish to speak? If not, public comments time is closed. Next, we have our appointee committee report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have three appointees today for action from the board. The first one is in Floyd to be put on the Wayne County Tourism Alliance Board, and that is in form of a motion.
Okay, hear the motion, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
The second one is Mr. Vin Falk to go on the Dudley Fire Department Commission. This is their tax board. They had one of their members to pass away, and they want to replace her with Mr. Vin Falk, and that is in the form of a motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
The last one is Ms. Kate Daniels to the Board of Directors for the Wayne Health Corporation. That is to fill a vacancy that one of the other members has termed out. Ms. Kate Daniels is, that's in form of a motion.
Heard the motion, any discussion?
That's effective January 1st.
January 1st.
Okay, January 1st.
All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We've had one add-on, number six, to add to two law firms for the HMPG and the CBDBG. And we've gone through the consent agenda briefing this morning. Is any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda. Motion made, any discussion? No discussion, please signify, approve, raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. Honeycutt?
Just a quick mention, wanted to remind you of the county Christmas party that will be held at the Maxwell Center this Thursday, beginning at 11:00 a.m. So I want to make sure that the board is there and invited, and looking forward to you being there. So that's all I have at this point. And I do want to say my shoulder is tired for pouring out four parade candies. So I have a workers' comp claim that I will be presenting earlier.
Denied.
The copper is broken, we can't do any budget amendments.
So, but that's all I have this time of the day.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the small child behind you there is the one you hit with that candy?
I did. I'm so sorry.
You seem darned around. I'm sorry.
Mr. Bailey? Yes, sir. I did not attend any meetings. I was out of state, and during the time that my Latino council and other people were having their committee meeting, so I'm going to pass all of my time to Commissioner Joe Dougherty. Mr. Acock?
Nothing other than, you know, I attended most of the Christmas parades. Great turnout at all of them. I did not attend the Goldsboro Parade. I had, some of y'all know, I'm still trying to be a volunteer firefighter. We had a pretty bad accident, and I hit with that, so that's the reason I missed the Great Goldsboro Parade. Been to several other events, because it is that time of the year. Had a good meeting yesterday morning at the college with joint meeting of the Board of Trustees and the Commissioners. Think we've got some things accomplished. And basically, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask, Carol, what was the guy's name that spoke in public? What was his name?
Dennis Lewis.
How much?
Dennis Lewis.
Okay, you're right. I remember now. Okay.
I, we had a DSS board meeting. Of course, you saw the results of that DSS meeting this morning, and it's, I attended most of the parades. I said the ones that I overslept and missed, which I did, the Fremont Parade. My wife was shopping, and I came home after Mount Olive, sat down in my recliner, and when I woke up, it was 2:00. I said, oh, my gosh, I missed it. But that's what happens when you get to be a citizen. That's all the comments I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kamori?
Attendance. DSS, we don't have to say much more about that. Mr. Mayo's covered, and we've seen the action. Thanks since I've been here, I tend, I know I did, the Board of Health meeting. And of course, there's an ongoing discussion and concern about their sites and all that. I guess, over time, availability of money and budget and so forth will take care of that. I did, we did, a number of us had an opportunity to go to Wayne Community College for breakfast yesterday morning. Break bread with a fine school, fine class. And you all are from Wayne Community College, aren't you? I would like to just take, allocate one or two minutes of my time just to have them to stand up and introduce themselves and any comment they may want to make on my time.
I'm Derek Hunter. I am serving as the supervisor. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us this morning. My name is Derek Hunter. I serve as the Associate Vice President for Administrative Services for the college, relatively a new employee to the college in only about three months now in my current role, responsible primarily for the facilities and operations and the long-range master plan. Appreciate you having us. Thank you for all your support of Wayne County and all you do in support of the college. Thank you for having us this morning.
My name is Craig Fod. I'm the Executive Director of the Wayne Business and Industry Center. Work hand in hand with WCDAs specifically in trying to make sure that the workforce needs of this county are met. You know, I think some of the information you guys shared with us yesterday, some information that I have been looking at for a while, and one of the things that I've been really just trying to figure out is with the population. The report showed that we had a population decrease. While it being slight at .5%, it still showed to be a decrease. I think if you look at demographics pretty closely, that we lose some very talented people to the triangle area. And what I'm trying to wrap my head around right now is, how do we keep that talent here? We know we've got talented individuals coming out of the Wayne County public schools. Some of them choose to go into university, as maybe some of you did. But we want to make sure that they come back to Wayne County. And so getting employers involved in education, I think, is one of the main ways that we do that and educate our youth as to what kind of careers are here. And then also within that, my department also looks at expanding business and industry needs and upscaling their workforce if they're going to be making capital improvement or expanding. So I know you guys know about some of the expansions that are happening here in the county, and our department is actually looking at trying to meet those workforce needs.
And thank you so very much for all that you do. I never miss an opportunity to share with the public a view that I have, and since you're here, and this is for the community college and the public schools. There is a desire of mine to expand community-based skill opportunities for folk who need them. And let me clear this, I am not, I know there are all kinds of programs in place for the under-18-year-old. I'm really talking about the over-18-year-old who has either not acquired the kind of skills they need, dropped out, whatever happened to them. I'm talking about the over-18-year-old after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon in the community where they live. History, I taught skill programs in Cumberland County after 6:00 in the afternoon. It would be remiss that we did not use our high schools with the shops that we have to make them available for the over-18-year-old to get skills that they desperately need. I take it so I'm just sure of that.
Absolutely. And to let you know, we do try to do our best at that. Welding is one of the probably primary ways that we address that. Now, one of the things that we do come up with an issue at, and another one, I think, Mr. Mayo with NC Manufacturing, CNC operators, as we know of other businesses, we have had some short-term workforce training. One of the struggles, though, is trying to be able to have the equipment on-site where needed for those particular jobs. And I just say that because it's hard to have a $200,000 CNC lathe that someplace like a-
Hold on, hold on a minute. Please don't.
Oh, yes, sir.
Forgetting me to interrupt you. Each time this discussion gets going, it gets to a $200,000 lathe.
Yes, sir.
There are plumbing, electrical trades, some of those courses, some of those things don't take a $200,000, anything to teach them. Now, you see, you're talking to someone who's taught, and I just want to share with you, each time this discussion comes up, we go to a conversation where the equipment and the logistics is beyond it. I would ask you to interact with the school system and find out exactly what they may have on-site already.
Yes.
The other thing is, I would argue that there are people out there who would appreciate making $20, $25 an hour to supervise a site at one of those schools. And the programs that I'm talking about are taught by skilled craftsmen who have at least five years of experience in that trade, get certified to do it. I would ask you to look at those-
Yes, sir.
-skills that does not take the $200,000 lathe or $300,000 set of welding equipment to do that.
Yes.
And let's start small and work towards the large.
I apologize. I was just trying to give you some examples of things that we were doing right now that we just couldn't do in the other locations, but I do agree with you completely.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Dougherty?
I'm sorry.
Well, there's nobody left to beat up on. Don't leave that one.
The first thing I want to say is this, communication is key. Mr. Lewis feels like he's been wronged. It's up to us to reach out to him, to try to find out where the miscommunication is, because he really does feel like he's been wronged. So hopefully, we can find somebody, whether it's Chip, Craig, all of you, to try to reach out to him, to sit down and go through our ordinance and see what his concerns are, because he really does feel like he's been discriminated against. Everybody on this board remembers, we started back six years ago, and one of our primary goals was to see that 117 was converted to I-795, that it be completed all the way down to I-40. And Commissioner Acock, I know things move slow in buildings, but gosh, the highway department, they are just now finally moving it after we got legislation passed in Congress to designate it, that corridor, as an interstate, future interstate. They had their meetings yesterday, and I was so pleased to go to one of those meetings. It was one of the largest turnouts I've seen at one of these informational meetings. I mean, I've- I mean, I drove up to the event center, and the parking lot was full, and I said, "All these people out golfing? Where do all these people do it here?" But they were inside. There's a lot of interest in that project. Driving 117 now and seeing those overpasses going up, I mean, it really does put a little tingle down your back to see, finally, they are putting some things in place. So that's a good thing, to finally see that some of our efforts from years back are beginning to pay dividends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I piggyback on you just a minute?
Me and Mr. Doherty were there at the same time, and what he says is correct, but I complain about taking so long to get things done. I will never live longer to ride on that road. In fact, there's no one sitting up here that will. I'm not sure there's anybody in this room that will.
I'm playing deliberately on the twenty.
You ain't gonna make it. One section of that road, they're saying, will not be even put on the drawing board to a 2037.
Oh, man. No kidding. We're gone. We're gonna move it up. We'll move it up. We'll get it moved up.
And it was a great turnout. There was a lot of interest, a lot of interest, and I think me and Mr. Doherty, we did learn some things yesterday that we did not even found them as that you had, when it comes to an interstate. For instance, the intersection where 117 now connects with Interstate 40, I'd always had in my mindset that that intersection, you know, that was already completed, but knowing to me, that intersection has got to be configured so you can merge traffic on one interstate to another interstate at 70 miles an hour. I mean, it's, it's amazing, but the good, like Mr. Doherty said, the good thing is, they're working on the sections between the fire ground and Mount Olive, and I've said the whole time, if you get both ends finished, that moodle will come together. Thank you.
Mr. Pay.
Balling up on that, because, you know, I was on Highway 70 when I first, you know, got elected, and we tried to do the whole thing at once, but found out that does not work. You've got to bite it off one bite at a time, and that's beginning to show, but I agree, none of us will be here when that thing is finished. We'll be, hopefully, I'll be up watching down. Parades, had a great time. My shoulder hurts, too, and I was so proud of our county manager. He was throwing candy with one hand and driving with the other. And I kept telling him, I said, "How about getting a little bit closer to my side so I don't have to throw the candy so far?" He was just dropping his. This time of year, all of us are going to be invited, and we're being invited to a lot of different, Christmas parties and that kind of thing. Like, I'm invited to two tonight, I can't go to the one place. So, everybody understands, we can't be everywhere, but we'll try to make as many as we can. It's like tonight, I'm going to the Sauson Fire Department Christmas party. Look forward to that, and those are my neighbors, and I look forward to all the others. That's all I have.
It seemed like everybody's covering most, all the meetings for the past couple of weeks, but I'd like to recognize, in all this day, Mr. Jack Howe. Jack's a neighbor of mine, little bit of kinship there also, but has been a mentor to me throughout my life, and Jack is past Fire Chief at Oakland Fire Department. He helped me along the way throughout my career, and also former president of Wayne County Fire Association, so just recognize Jack for being here today. Good man, good friend, very close friend. And Sheriff, I apologize, not attending last night your oath, but Ms. Dana had me out doing some Christmas shopping, and with, as Mr. Pay said, with all the things going on, was limited time, so I had to make the best of what time I had, but congratulations, I heard you had a good turnout. Yeah, I did as I was told. Very wise man told me that once upon a time, you know.
Is he sitting back there?
Yes, sir. Anyway, congratulations, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman.
I did have a follow-up. I apologize. But each of you got this invitation, and I wanted to expand upon this just a little bit. On December the 11th is the rooftop party, and y'all are probably looking at that, and December 12th is a dinner. What in the world is all that about? The travel and tourism is actually bringing in a number. I do not know the exact number, was it 10, 12, or 20, but they're bringing in media specialists into Wayne County and Goldsboro, and they're going to house them, put them up, and tour around Wayne County during this time. So it's about a two-and-a-half-day event that they'll be here, and it's a time for us, really, to make Wayne County shine. And I'm asking you all to try to, as best you can, to make one of these two events and reach out to these media, because whether we like it or not, the media does really make the reputation of a county, or a city, or an individual. So with that in mind, it would be a very worthwhile thing for you to drop in, shake some hands, and be extremely friendly and open, and invite them back here to Wayne County. And that, again, is on the 11th and 12th of December. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You saw it.
You better RSVP today, because yesterday's really was the deadline. I saw it this morning, I sent her an email about 7:00 this morning. Can I still come?
Oh, you can. Definitely. Please make it.
Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. I'd just like to follow up on something. Mr. Lewis came before us this morning. I was under the impression, he's been up here a couple of times, I was under the impression that the issues that he was questioning had already been taken care of. For the record, I would, I don't have a problem getting involved in this, but I have to know about it. Mr. Lewis has never called me as a commissioner. I've never gotten a phone call from him. I thought that all of this had been taken care of. Bottom line is, is that a year or so ago, when he said that he couldn't get the applications and the paperwork and all this stuff from the county, I thought that all of that was settled. Is it not?
We are working, he made a request for public records, and Carol is working.
And I think I can expand on what Mr. Mayo is talking about. Prior to me becoming the clerk, there was an issue with a late application.
Yes, that's correct.
But I went back and looked at the minutes, and my understanding is that you, at that time, approved that application, and every application that he has sent in since then has been approved. So I'm not understanding how that's affected his business, and maybe that's what needs to be clarified, but everything that, I went back and researched from the clerk's standpoint, even though it was late, it was still handled, so.
Well, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to go sit down and talk to Mr. Lewis. I don't have a problem with that. If, if the board, unless the board wants, you know, the county manager and so forth to handle this, but I don't have a problem going to his house and sitting down with him. I don't have, I don't have a problem with it.
He's made a request for some public documents, and we're in the process right now of getting that information, so there was a lot that he did ask for, so it has taken some time to get that information together, but we do plan on giving that, and we will be more than happy to sit down with him and try to resolve his issues. You know, I don't know, there's some past issues that we can resolve, but we can make sure that moving forward, that everything's moving smoothly for what he wants to do.
I'd like to be included in the loop on this. Whenever you move forward, you have a meeting with him? Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, is this a subject that we can talk about in closed session, or is it not?
You can talk, it depends on the nature of it, if you.
It's pertaining to the past history. And if not, we'll talk about it right here. I mean, I just, I don't want to throw Mr. Lewis under the bus, and I don't want to throw us under the bus, is where I'm going.
I don't, I don't think that it would be appropriate for closed session.
Okay, all right. I'll say what I want to say right here, then. It's been numerous occasions when his application was late. It won't just one, it's been numerous. So, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. Is that not correct?
It's correct. Okay, next, we have closed session for the purpose of.
Same thing that we did this morning.
All right. Closed session.
I should go.
Close session, go to closed session. All in favor?